Two things, first of all, I would like to open with the idea of announcing a state of emergency in the town Free Town. And as you have seen in the emails from David, this is partly to get any funding that would come along. I just before I opened this up, I was reading that the state of emergency has been announced by the Bristol County Board of Commissioners for basically for this purpose. So I'll open that up for discussion.
Charlie? I'd like, just like to bring to the attention that we had an earlier meeting regarding another matter. And during that meeting, it was discussed that it may be wise and prudent not to issue that emergency declaration until a late, probably at some point late next week. In that we will specifically address how basically the 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 ability of the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen to make certain directives in emergency situations to expend funds without authorization and to apply for both MEMA and FEMA funds. But at this time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to take a few extra days and put together that emergency declaration so that it reflects the things that we're going to try to do more clearly. And and re-present that back to the board, probably at this point Wednesday or Thursday next week.
All right, does anyone have any problem with that?
No, I just want to add, I have been in touch with Carol. David, this is to you and also to Derek, that there may not be a need to do the declaration that the governor has set aside $5 million to local boards of health. And all there is is there, there's a form to fill out and that you can send in. So you might want, she's going to send me the form or the link for it. Once I get it, I'll send it to you and maybe, like you said, we'll wait until next week, but it may not be necessary at all. So you may want to look into that.
Okay, just a couple of things. One, my additional concern would be MEMA and FEMA, well, not so much MEMA because MEMA is for Massachusetts, but FEMA funds, which are federal funds that come through the federal government. And we might need it for that. Also, I just want to point out to the board that if we do issue the declaration, we already have had a department head meeting, I believe it was on Wednesday. We were, we've been working very actively over the last week and a half to put into place certain mechanisms and protocols that allow us to continue doing business. And one of the, one of the discussions was how are we going to pay bills? How are we going to, if we need supplies, how are we going to, you know, are those supplies going to be reimbursed? So as a result of that discussion in the department head meeting, anything that's COVID-19 related, we've asked the individual departments to keep receipts of. And any expenditure that's considered a large expenditure, well, all the department heads are under the understanding in the order to have me approve any large expenditures. So all of the expenditures that we make during the COVID-19 crisis will be pre-approved by me so that people aren't randomly going out and spending money that may or may not be reimbursed.
I think my number one concern would be the police department and the fire department, making sure they have enough PPE. So I would definitely want to make sure that they have enough, you know, supplies. So you may, I'm sure you're checking with them, but I just want to reiterate that.
Okay, I got two things going on that front. One is that we've been working with Stop and Chop, and they've been awesome in terms of helping us out with certain supplies, Purepil, the sanitizing wipes, and different other things that are related to supplies that are related to minimizing the impact of the virus. And I want to recognize them because they have been outstanding, they're continuing to work to get us the supplies that we need. I've also reached out to Amazon and I put, I put two calls in, have not heard back from the person that I had a contact with. And what I've asked of Amazon was, I was basically to to provide us with supplies such as masks, gloves, Purell, hand sanitizers, all of those kinds of things that would be necessary by public safety personnel should they put in a situation that they needed. And I referenced it specifically to their property. You know, if you want us to provide public safety and protection to their property, you have to make sure that our public safety personnel are properly protected. I didn't hear back to you, but I did this morning contact our legislative delegation through Senator Roderick's, Paul Schmidt, and Carol Fiola. Carol has already gotten back to me with a contact that she might have. So if we can't get the, the things that we need through a donation, I told her at least have Amazon give us a preferred vendor that they can direct us to so that we can buy those supplies. The key is right now, we have enough supplies in the short run. But my concern is that if this goes on longer, I don't want people reusing masks or, you know, not being able to sanitize Lysol wipes or Lysol spray to be able to sanitize the the ambulances or clean their hands off and that kind of, so we are working. And, and, and on a similar note, we are, we have an inventory in Town Hall that we provided to all of the offices, so they have the things that they need right now. Once again, they're in limited supply. Every time we have an opportunity to purchase those supplies, we've been doing that.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any comment? All right, then I think the, the other issue and the next issue is whether or not to oh, have town employees that are not essential be able to work from home. I made my feelings on this Monday night and I haven't changed them at all. I think from what I've read and so forth, what I've heard, quarantining is going to be the answer to limiting the spread of this virus. And I don't want to see anyone ending up in the hospital. Okay, one, the thing, the most important thing that I see is keeping the curve of the infection manageable, and that's what every, every American has to do. They have to work to do that. And I think that's, at this point, people who can work from home, would work from home. You know, I, I see there's an issue to some extent with highway, some of the people who, you know, back debt and the custodial issues that we do want to keep the fire stations and police station clean. But I really think that we really should, you know, be proactive here and allow these people to work from home. It's, you know, social distancing isn't just keeping three feet away. Social distancing is keeping away from people as much as we can. That's my, that's my feelings on it.
I would also like to, to make a statement on this. My position hasn't changed either from Monday. My primary concern is the health, welfare and safety of the employees, not only in Town Hall, but in all of the other offices. And the, the fact that we have a third of our employees that are over the age 65, we have a couple of employees who have parents that have autoimmune diseases. I think when we look back on this, this is a major health crisis. And I think when we look back on this, we're going to look back on, you know, what did we do in this crisis? And, and I don't think that it's going to be, well, we issued 25 building permits and we inspected five septic systems or that we did 25 smoke alarm inspections. The, the key players in this are going to be our fire, our police, our EMTs, and the council on aging in terms of being the frontline personnel to address it. They're going to be doing, they're, they're our frontline defense, they're going to be doing the hard work. And I think that we need, and all of those functions, we've been talking about how we're going to implement and carry out those functions when they become critical to the, to reach a critical mass that really, we need to protect people. So my, my feeling is that, and the other thing too, is it's going to come down to Free Town residents themselves helping neighbors, you know, the senior person that lives next door, you know, checking in on them. They have extra food, providing it for them. We're going to continue your critical services to the COA. Right now, we're going to be, we're trying to schedule at least one grocery run down a Stop and Chop where people can take the bus down. We're still doing the brown bag program, although we're doing it under a certain protocol that requires that the, the individuals that can pick up those groceries at the pavilion behind the COA out in the open, the whole function is going to be done by the highway department. And those seniors that are homebound, the groceries are going to be placed outside their door. So we're trying to continue on the functions that we feel are critical and essential to those residents that are in need. A building inspection permit or it's nice, but I don't think that that's where we should be focusing our efforts. We can, you know, we have talked about how, there's a number of functions in Town Hall that can be done remotely, we've had meetings about it, all of our payroll, all of the payments of vendors, looking at how we're going to distribute the mail. All of those functions are, can be done remotely. The other thing that we've discussed, and I'm probably going to work on over the weekend, is having the department heads identify things that could be done from home remotely by non-essential personnel. And maybe we have a list, we've always have a list of 50 projects going here in Town Hall, in the Town Administration Office that are, that never seem to get done. And maybe saying, all right, for this week, this is the project you're going to work on, I need you to call this, this person, find out this kind of information, identifying projects that'll keep people busy. The other thing that we want to do is if they're not here, if opportunities come up to volunteer, that, you know, we need somebody of a senior center to help out, that we can reallocate those people and, and have them do some of the essential functions that may be done by somebody else or by a resident, you know, including dropping off medicine, picking up groceries and those kinds of things. So, you know, the people aren't going to just be sitting at home, they're going to be tasked with certain responsibilities. Some jobs don't lend themselves to remote participation. And, and my intent is to have at least two or three meetings every week remotely on Zoom, which we're currently on, with all of the department heads and identify issues and problems that need to be addressed and as a group and as a team, plan out how we can solve those issues. So, you know, we're taking this very seriously. You know, like I said, it's really coming down to, the real heroes in this are going to be our fire, our police, our EMTs. And those are the people that are going to be directly safe and, and on the front line of this crisis. This is real, and I think that we really need to, to address it and be proactive and be leaders here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, David. I'll open it up for anyone else to comment. Hello, Lisa, do you have a comment?
Um, so I believe that all the non-essential personnel, unless directed by the Board, the Commission or Committee or Department Head, like Pam, Nadine, Chandler, Neil, Cheryl and Isabel, Lynette, do not need to be at Town Hall. I do think that at least one or two days a week, essential, all essential personnel should be at Town Hall. Whether you change your days or whatever, but I do think that there needs to be somebody that, from each department that checks in at Town Hall. You know, you, you have that mailbox in the front, we have excise taxes coming in, which I'm going to talk about in a second. So I do think that there are things that need to be done at Town Hall, unless somebody proves to me otherwise. I also I, I also think that we should do an extension on excise taxes with no penalties. I think that, again, we should ensure that the police and the fire have enough PPE to go around. I also think that we should make an increase in our unemployment fund because it's at its bare minimum right now. So I don't know where that's going to go. So those are just, I also think that we should look into a custodial staff to come in and do a deep cleaning if our offices are going to be shut down and see the cost of that.
We've actually started working on that.
Great, but I mean, I know that you have reached out to the schools for some cleaning supplies, but I think that we should, that's probably something that could fall under our reimbursement through the Board of Health.
We've, we've been in touch actually with a couple of companies that do deep cleaning. So, you know, I, I have had with a Service Master, we, they sent me some information. There's also a Clear Factor company, they're, they're all, there's a ton of them out there. They're all going to be, they're, they're going to be booked up for work because at this point, everybody's doing the same thing, but we want to make sure the building is clean. And, and even with just having one or two people come in a day, my concern with that is honestly, is that if that person somehow gets infected and touches a doorknob or a door handle or touches something in the building on a desk and another person comes in and touches it, you're giving that person the, the virus. But you're not only giving that person the virus, you're giving that person's husband or spouse or grandmother, grandfather the virus. That, I think that, that the distancing part of it is critical to solving the problem. And I, I have strong, I'm going to come in, you know, I know Derek has expressed that he's going to be here. I'm not going to be here every day, I'm, I'm actually in the target group. I have a little bit of a concern because I am in that 60-year-old group and there are a third of us that are in that group and basically all department heads. So I, I think that we really have to show care and caution and really look out for the health and safety of our employees. Once again, you know, having, you know, having the, you know, making a thousand dollars at the transfer station is a nice thing to do on a weekend, but if it's, if it's going to get, cause somebody to get sick, then I, I would question the value of that. That's my personal opinion, you know, I'm, I'm passionate about this. I, I really feel that this is, this is a moment of truth kind of thing, that we have to do what's right for our employees and we have to do what's right to make sure that nobody is in a situation where they're going to get sick. And, you know, there's no guarantee that, you know, if they leave here, it's closed down for two weeks, if they're not going to get sick. I just don't want it to be coming out of this building and I don't want to be, have everybody in the building be exposed and then all of us are in that same situation. We're bringing it home to our husbands, our wives, our kids, grandparents, that kind of thing. There's a real threat here, I think it's not, you know, an existential threat, it's a real threat. And I think that we have to be proactive, I think we have to address the problem head-on and say, this is something we're going to do to protect our employees.
All right, any other comment? George, you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I mean, I agree with most of everything that's been said, but I'm looking for answers and leadership from the state. And what I'm seeing right now as of today, what the state offices are doing is what we're voted to do the other night. And that is to stay open, but not open to the public. And all of the state agencies that I'm aware of, like the RMV, Unemployment Office, State Services, just about all of these are open, but closed to the public. And you can call there and get services, whatever you need.
Derek, can you respond to that? Is Derek online?
I, I was, been trying to contact DP, I was in contact with DP yesterday and I've been trying to contact DPH and both are working remotely. I was told by DP's staff, he had called me from his home because he had got his email remotely and DPH was also working remotely as well.
On our, even on our Town Council, our Town Council is working remotely. So you, I, like I said, it all depends on what type of services we're talking about. Is, is it worth putting somebody's life in line, on the line to issue a building permit? Or to, you know, have a septic inspection? Comes down to the board making a decision as to what it feels is important. If, if that, I, I'm, I'm putting it back to you, I'm, I've told you how I feel. If you want to do something different than what I feel, then, then that's a decision. The board has to make that decision. And that's, and if there is a decision that we're going to continue on the path that we're on, that we need a definition of what the triggering event will be when we actually close Downtown Hall. Is it going to, or Town Offices, is it going to be somebody in the building getting sick? Because at that point, the horse is out of the bond. And, you know, you can't pull that one back because everybody in the building will be quarantined for 14 days at that point. So I, I don't want to speak to the board, you guys ultimately are making the decision. I'm, I'm just asking you to consider all of facts so that we make a decision that's based on fact and that, you know, that's just how I feel, the bottom line.
So let me, let me just ask this question. You just said, David, that you were going to come in at least one or two times a week to check on things. Okay, wasn't that my point when I started off? I said, no, non-essential personnel, Pam, Cheryl, whomever is deemed not essential does not have to work and can work remotely, but needs to be checked on every week to ensure that there is work being done for the town, not only for the town itself, but for the citizens of the town. And I also said that essential personnel should come into their offices at least one or two times a week to check, to make sure that everything is up, that everything is up to date, the phone calls are being taken care of. You know, we're not going to come back in a month from now and have like 25 different people calling, we're going to be on a backlog, but now we're going to be working overtime. So I do think that it's important that department heads or essential personnel come in at least one or two times a week to make sure that everything is being done. And I do think that there needs to be at least a weekly meeting, whatever it is, that ensures that everything that we set out is being processed, that there's not letters and stuff left in the mailbox, that, you know, we're not giving penalties to people that because no one's in the office that their taxes are not being done and processed in, in a timely fashion. So those are the things that concern me. Do I believe that there is a potential for us to have more tasks that show positive? Yes, I do, but that's why we're not having the public come in. But you're all working in your office, so you've all been in your office for weeks now. I'm not changing the policy of having the public come into Town Hall. And I'm not, and I've come a little bit halfway to both of you saying, okay, non-essential personnel can work from home because we don't need them and we don't need to expose them any further. I get that, but there are, we have a government, this is a government and there needs to be some, you know, some beneficial entity to the citizens that we represent. And we need to make sure that we're doing our job because while we're all home, you're still all getting paid.
I understand that. And honestly, what you just said is something I can live with entirely. And let me explain also that we've already identified what And let me explain also that we've already identified what personnel can work from home. We already identified that we have put out instructions where every employee, not just department heads, are dialing in. To pick up their messages and responding to our customers. We have uh set up a mechanism for um. Uh for participating in um conference calls if they're needed. Uh we have also um requested that uh there's a third prong of that. It's the voicemail, the uh email, oh yeah, check your voicemail, check your email. And respond to the, if anybody, even if it's a clerk in their office, if they're getting a phone call, we expect them to call back. I'm also gonna ask the department heads to say, all right, e- even in this office, in terms of we have a a town administration. Task list that always has things on it. There might be things that we can push off to other departments to say, hey, this is what we want you to work on. This is something you can do while you're home, you know, so that you are, you know, doing town work. And we have mechanisms set up so people can pay their bills. They, you know, we have a lockbox, we have a box outside, we're gonna have people checking that box. Uh people are still gonna be able to make their payments, you know, uh Jess and Kim and other employees. Uh have all, we've we've had lengthy discussions about how we're gonna handle payroll, vendor checks, processing bills. Um and the like. So there there are mechanisms in place that will allow us to continue to service our customers. And you know, I think we're on the same page. If you, the non-essentials can stay home, but we can still give them work. And that would be at the direction of the department head.
I agree, but I'm up. I haven't heard you say that you believe that essential people need to be at work two days a week onsite.
I I we, I said that right at the beginning. I said, I'm gonna be here. I know Derek is gonna be here, Kim and um. Uh Jessica both said that they're gonna be coming in when the situation warrants it. If we need to actually, we could do the payroll. And we can do the the producing the warrants remotely, but they will have to come in maybe to to put them out so they can be signed. All the essential personnel, Barbara, um you know, she can, she can coordinate uh scheduling the, you know, the stop and shop pickup. Um making sure that people are getting their medicines and and those kind of things. There are tasks that can be done. And and we expect them to be done uh from home. Or if they need to come in, they the the, we're not saying, don't come in. The essential personnel, that's an expectation. That's why we define those people in the policy. Under let us see, we defined essential personnel as the town administrator, the board of health agent, building inspector, council agent director, treasurer, collector, town clerk, town accountant. And all police dispatch personnel, the E M T personnel. I must E M T in there, that should be. So we we know who our central personnel are and they know what their responsibilities are. And if there's a need for people, I don't, I suspect that all of those people will be coming in at least once or twice a week, just to to check things out, to make sure things, they get their mail. We, you know, we're gonna, we have a provision why, uh a way that we can actually distribute the mail, uh or at least make sure the mail is safe. Because I don't want anybody taking mail out of a bin, you know, that hasn't been laid out for twenty-four hours that may have the virus on it. So we're gonna adopt a procedure why we we rotate those bins, so only the oldest mail is picked up and opened.
Could we get a schedule of who does what, when and who was here?
All of that, all, I I'll be honest with you, George, all of that is fluid at this point. We we know, like I said, the the essential personnel know what their jobs are. It's the people that support the essential personnel that technically can't do the things that the essential personnel can do. So now the task is, what else can you do? And I laid out that maybe the department head might have a project that she's wanted to, or he has wanted to work on for a period of time. That employee can then be tasked with doing that project in lieu of sitting in the office and in in being here in Town Hall. The expectation is that people will do some work. I also included a provision that if we needed volunteers, that we can call up on those people. And say, hey, we need somebody to help out with the brown bag, can you do that? Obviously, we're gonna take certain precautions to make sure they're protected in the process and we're protecting them against, you know, uh infecting uh our seniors.
I can, can we revisit the fact that all of the state offices are still open? With doors closed, no outside people coming in, working, closed built.
That's true, George. I can't, I I I don't have a breakdown specifically of every single office that, you know, in the state. But I I don't believe that that's true. From what I'm hearing.
It was true yesterday.
It's not true yesterday because I, like I already had said, I've been in contact with D P and D P H and they're working remotely.
Okay. I like to ask George a question. Okay, what is your point of keeping these offices open? What's the point?
The business goes on as normal as possible.
All right, but no, George.
That our, that our citizens don't feel like we've left town. You know, that this is still an operational town here.
So what you're saying is, George, you're afraid that somebody might sometimes say, oh, somebody didn't come to work for a day because of this. George, in the realm of.
That's that's.
No, George, George, listen, listen.
Charlie, you're going way off page.
No, George, pardon me, I'm the chair, all right? I'm gonna say this. George, what is your point? I I I cannot see where in the realm of everything that's going to transpire in the next twelve months or so. That whether or not someone did not work, quote unquote, to the optimum amount of their pay is. Is gonna be immaterial, okay? I'm gonna read.
That's not gonna do it, Paige, Charlie.
Like I'm talking, no, no, George, please. I I've listened to you. I I've, I made my opening statement to both of you. I haven't changed my view from Monday. I'm gonna say this. My my concern is to keep every person that I can out of the hospital so that people who are at, who. Have gotten sick because of some reason that they had no control over. It that there's no one goes to the hospital. We gotta keep this curve as we can and.
I have that concern about families too. I get sick, I bring it home to my wife. My wife brings it home to her aunt, you know, it it is. I don't, I don't know.
I I I think, you know, we we can revisit this at a later time. Uh and and see whether quarantine needs to be, but right now. Everything I've heard, everything I've read is the more we can keep people away from each other, the more we can keep in basically quarantine, the better off we're going to be. All right? And that's my concern. I, my concern is for these town employees and for their their loved ones, the the their household members. David has come up with a plan that is is workable. And I can't see why, you know, people can't understand. And and people who don't understand, they're not gonna understand no matter what, George. And I think it is, we have a plan, we should, we should put it into place.
Just so everybody knows, Lakeville is working with the skeletal crew, so they are still working.
Very, very, one person in an office, Detective Maureen's morning. And they're rotating.
One person per office?
All day.
David, are you saying that there's only one person in one office?
One person, one office.
Okay, well, I would go along with that. That sounds like a very good idea. There would be no spread, uh no contamination. Uh I I think that's an excellent point.
The bathrooms, you know.
What? But that would, that's an excellent point, David.
You you're missing the bigger point though, George, is that if somebody brings it into the building. And that virus stays on surfaces, on handles, on doors, you don't have the custodian cleaning the building. So now the building, when you come in, you're opening that door, you're touching that uh toilet handle, you're touching your doorknob. You know, all of those things can be picked up from a surface and.
I don't know that.
And they're and they're.
That's why we wash our hands. That's why hand washing is critical.
All right, so you you wash your hands and you you go out of the 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 thing and you touch enough the door handle. Uh uh it it's it it's a difference of opinion in terms of.
Right, you're right.
I respect your opinion, but I don't agree with it.
Wait, okay.
I just think that there's, why put people at risk if you don't need?
The government has to keep working. That's why the state has all of their offices, not all of them, but most of their offices are still. You know, that's, it's.
All right.
So again, I I don't, I I feel like I've said this a thousand times. All and non-essential personnel, from my point of view, do not need to be there. So yes, now you're down to one person per office. And I also said at least two days a week. And I I truly believe that in another three days from now, this is gonna be a moot point because we're gonna all be on lockdown. So I think this is gonna be a moot point. Anyway, George and I. Agree that there are essential people that need to be in the office because we need to make sure that government doesn't shut down. Because then who do our citizens rely on if government is not there to answer our questions? No one. So that to me is a is a vital, important act in all of this. I believe that essential personnel need to be there at least two days a week. And I'm not gonna go.
How are they gonna, how are they gonna, how are they gonna address that? The building is closed. How is the the, they can address it through means that already exist. They can call the phone. Our personnel will check the phone two or three times a day and they can return the call. They can send an email. They can respond to the email and and then respond to me in terms of getting the resources they need to the person that we need. We're still providing the service. We're not just putting people in buildings to sit there and potentially get the disease. That is my point.
If I may chime in, if I just want to add one thing, as a department head and as David has already brought up. I've already volunteered myself to come in a couple of times a week uh to make.
I thought I would do that too.
Um uh as long as I'm standing on my two feet, I have every intention on keeping as much as I can moving. I can do webinars from home, I can check emails from home, but if somebody needs an inspection, they're gonna know. That they can email me and I will schedule to go out and do a septic inspection for them because I don't feel like that's putting me at risk. And other department heads I have talked to, they feel the same way I do. If they were told to come in once or twice a week, they don't have a problem with that.
We're gonna do that.
To reiterate Lisa's point, i- it's not something that's out of the realm of possibility. If I have to come in a couple of times a week to check mail and to.
You offered to do that, but I I wanna make sure that it is getting done. So to offer to do it, can tomorrow, you could change your mind and say, I'm not gonna do it. And there's nothing to say that I made a motion, please don't roll your eyes at me because you did that yesterday and it aggravated the hell out of me.
Hold on, hold on.
No, and oh, I'm not listening to you. I don't care if you're the chair of the Taj Mahal. I'm not listening right now. I'm saying something that's important to me. I believe that we need to make it in a motion that somebody needs to be there, every department head, all essential personnel, at least two days a week. And all non-essential personnel can stay home as long as they provide a weekly log of whatever tasks that they're they're given. Because it, the optics are, if we shut Downtown Hall, the optics are that we've turned our back on the citizens of Freetown, and I will not go along with that.
All right, first of all, Lisa, I never rolled my eye.
Charlie, Charlie, can I just tell you before, before, before?
All right, I'm just, you know, I don't, I know you don't respect me, Lisa, you you have all the answers, that's fine. That's, I'm beyond that. I I'm not gonna have a personality clash with you over this. This is far too serious to have a personality clash with you, okay? So please don't, let's keep on the topic. Okay, George, you had something to say?
No, I just wanted to say that I agree with Lisa's assessment of the situation.
All right, all right, what do you want to do? I mean. I I want, I need a motion. We 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 passionate this out, I need a motion, okay?
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion that all non-essential personnel. Unless directed to work by their board, commission, committee or department head, do not need to go to work. They can work remotely. And need to do um a weekly log to be sent, to be sent into. To those boards, commissions, committee or department heads and the town administrator. And I also make in my motion that it is a requirement that all essential personnel work two days a week, Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday. Um and that is, that is my motion, until a shelter in place takes effect by the governor.
And I would add to that, that I would like to see the schedule of who does what, when on that uh policy. With that, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I'll go along, I I I, you know, once again, we're not really making a decision here, but um, all right, aye. Can you have all that? Okay, i- is there anything else uh that we need to discuss?
Yes.
The, uh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanna um, I also wanna make a motion that we do an extension on excise taxes because those are due. With no penalties, um at least for the next month.
Okay, my my question to that is, has anyone checked into?
Is there a statutory authority?
Statutory authority, I don't know. And I I, you know, we, it's out of the realm of uh taxation. Questions are generally out of the the realm is at least with uh relation to collection. So, I mean.
Well, if there is, then fine, we won't do it, but if there's not, I'll make that part of my motion that we, that we do that.
All right, it's understood that if it's against the law, then we won't do it.
Right, so that's my motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
The other thing we had was the uh town meeting policy. Um just basically framing out um. The the primary part of it is to discourage people from meeting at this point. Uh I know that certain things require meetings because of certain statutory requirements to have meetings within certain periods of time. But I don't think at this point, if anything is not, if something is not critical, that we should be setting up meetings and doing things that. Uh promote having meetings. And if we, if it is a critical situation, for example, a a subdivision uh. Plan that needs to be responded to within a period of time, if you're gonna hold it. In the physical realm uh and have participants there, that the participants be distanced socially and that. Any other people, parties that aren't part of the meeting or the discussion would should be in a separate area. Uh I would encourage and we can assist with helping those certain boards and committees that do need to meet. To arrange to set up a Zoom meeting for them and allow the public to participate that way. And that's all laid out in the uh the policy.
Any discussion?
Um I, yeah, I would just leave that to, um I I would definitely agree that um they should do that as much as possible. Um but I would leave it up to the each board or commission or whatever um chair.
Any other discussion? George, you have any comment?
No.
Um, well, I I believe there is a uh policy about only the chairman um needing to be. At a position, and I think that's gonna be changing if it hasn't already.
You don't even need that now.
No, I didn't think so.
You don't even need to have that. We're all, we're all participating remotely now. The other thing to keep in mind is that the the standard right now, that's handed down by the C D C. Uh is that you shouldn't have gatherings of more than ten people. Now, if you have a large public hearing. Now, if you have a large public hearing, that's going to be problematic. So those type of meetings that potentially could be extended or postponed should be postponed. That's what we're trying to communicate. We're trying to limit the amount of people who come to meetings. And if we could, if it's absolutely positively necessary thing for, that needs to be done, yes, we can do it. Let's do it remotely. Let's invite public participation. But let's not have people in contact with each other.
Do I hear any motions?
I'll have a, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tim, do you have that?
Does the board have any concerns or questions regarding the, we've been meeting pretty actively with the department heads and have basically providing resources to all the town employees in addressing individually by each department the types of things that we need to address as part of our preparedness. And we think we have everything covered. We've been actively working on it. But, you know, we're always open to suggestions from the board as to, you know, if you see a weakness, you see something that we should be doing. This is all new to everybody. We're all learning as we go. We're learning from each other. And I think that, you know, I'm always open to suggestions as to how to better plan or if there's a, there's a gap somewhere that we're not filling that, you know, I hope everybody would, you know, as a team, say, hey, what are we doing about this? And there will be mistakes made along the way because we're human and that, you know, we're trying to think of everything, but it's, it's a pretty, the last week and a half have really been pretty intense in terms of, we've been, Derek and I, in terms of being in touch with Mass Public Health, the daily briefings, MEMA briefings. We're getting bombarded with information from MIA. We're getting involved, provided with information from the MMA. We have the South Coast Managers Group, which has been an enormous resource to all the managers in the South Coast. We have the M P A, which is a personnel association, which is very actively involved in there. Everybody is, is trying to do their best in a really kind of unusual situation. And like I said earlier, you know, when the push comes to shove and the story is told, you know, the real heroes, the real people are going to be the people on the front lines, the EMT, the police, the fire, because they're the ones that are going to be, you know, in danger and putting their lives. And as well as just normal people in the community, this is an opportunity for people to help each other and for residents to help each other, to volunteer at the senior center, help out with the brown bag. We, granted, we have to provide a safe environment for them also. But it's a, it's a real opportunity to show ourselves as a community, a community that can take care of each other. So I, I'm hoping for the best, but we're prepared for the worst.
So I just think that we need to make sure that we provide factual information, maybe on a daily basis or in every other day up on our website, probably from the CDC specifically. And also, you know, some of the governor's recommendations. David, I'd like to see if you can set up an emergency meeting this afternoon with public safety because as I understand it, will probably be in state of, not state of emergency, we're going to be in a lockdown situation. So I do think that we need, that's probably, I'm not sure if you've talked about that yet, but, you know, what do we do? What does that mean for citizens? How are we going to get that word out to people, you know? What does that entail? So I think that you and also Carlton and Gary and, you know, whoever you deem necessary should be part of that conversation because I truly believe that within the next 48 hours, that's going to happen.
I would agree. All right. I have no problem doing that. It'll probably be, it'll probably be a conference call.
Yep, that's fine. I don't care which way you do it. Also, I told you in the beginning of this conversation that the paperwork for providing funding for the board of health, that is now in your email.
That is now what?
It's in your email, the form that we have to fill out. You have that in your email. So maybe you and Derek can get to that before you leave today.
All right. Sounds reasonable. I would invite the board members to participate in the department meetings. If that will, you know, once again, to, to, you know, learn about what we're doing and, and, you know, be part of the discussions in terms of how we can do what we need to do better. So.
Okay.
Well, David?
Keep you in the loop. Technically, it would be a meeting. At this point, honestly, the public safety, as far as I'm concerned, is more important than, you know, a meeting violation if it does happen. But just have maybe one member rotate them, you know. Public safety is the number one thing personally.
On your department head meetings, could you notify me when you have them?
Yep. I will do that.
Anything else?
Nope.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Be safe. Have a great day.
Yep. Take care.